Welcome to the House of Lords. Welcome to this meeting of the Global Health and Society Committee. We have no further forward today, so we'll move on to apologies. I have one apology from councillor Davis. I'll move that apology to sustain. Thank you, John. All in favour? Carried.
That takes us to declarations confirming the agenda. I'll move that the agenda be confirmed. Councillor Calvert seconds. All in favour? Carried. Declarations of interest, just a reminder that if you have any interest that would form a conflict, you should withdraw. On to the first report, and I think we're being joined by Bree. The Business Events Update. Welcome, Bree. The floor is yours. I think, do you have a little video for us to watch?
Yes, sure. And then the next one, just to pass out a couple of examples or something like that. So this video is called Hosted at Home, and it just gives a little bit of background about the Conference Assistance Programme and the work that we do with Tourism New Zealand when bidding for international conferences.
I was just hanging around, you know, searching internet and seeing what resources might be available. I came across to the conference assistance package within 24 hours of sending off a proposal, I had a response from it.
This was the first conference I'd ever pushed in before, so it was really helpful to have the business events team provide information.
The main help really was putting the proposal together. So we provided the information, but they made it professional and made it really crisp and short document.
They gave me a lot of support in terms of the actual presentation, and my understanding is we won the pitch well, that's all.
The business events team advised us to get some letters of support for our bid, and I think that actually really helped to get it across the line.
And also came with a sort of agreement right from the start that Edgeman would be able to offer preferential flight rates.
Members of the business events team actually came to Buenos Aires with us, which is where the Open Science Conference was held in 2010, and they prepared a very professional booth which advertised New Zealand as a conference destination. And in my view, that won over the delegates at the meeting. I was concerned with the distance that people have to travel and the cost of coming to New Zealand, but Tourism New Zealand really assured me that people were prepared to make the sacrifice, and they were absolutely right. We had over 1,000 people coming from 38 different countries, and they really enjoyed the experience and described it as one of the best conferences ever.
We came to the conference in Rotorua. It has very striking aspects, scenery, about the geography involved, that I knew would have a really good impact on the international community coming.
One of the good things about Auckland was the number of hotels that are situated around the convention centre. People really felt safe, that they could wander around in the evening, visit the city.
The local Dunedin Convention Bureau had an information site at the conference, so that people could find out what they could see, what they could do.
There's no doubt this was some great economic benefit to the asylum.
We actually made a hundred and fifty thousand US for the society as well, and it was just fantastic for the university as well in terms of the profile.
To have delivered a conference that has basically meant everything that I could possibly have asked for.
It has just meant so much to me, having been part of that community for quite a time. The business events team were critical to the success of our proposal, and I really feel we wouldn't have got across the line without their support.
Right, so this was actually a video that we played at a recent event we held in conjunction with Tourism New Zealand at the University of Itagao, and that was to highlight the resource of the Conference Assistance Programme and the sorts of support and funding available for academics that would like to bid for international conferences. This event was endorsed by the Vice Chancellor, and it was attended by about 50 of the academic community. Professor Lloyd Davis also spoke to the group about the experience he'd had with this programme, and also working with Tourism New Zealand and Enterprise Needon on the successful bidding for the Public Science Communication Conference, which will be coming in 2019. So from this event, we generated about seven leads, four of which have actually progressed into four bids, two of them you'll see from the material that I've passed out. The four bids, the size conferences range from 300 to 1,000 delegates, and they would be for the duration of 2018 to 2020, and of those four conferences, they would all likely fall between June and August. If successful, those four bids would contribute around $4 million to the local economy. So the pressure points within the tourism industry at the moment, and also continued coverage around the additional, four proposed additional convention centres in Wellington, Christchurch, and potentially Queenstown, it's been a trigger for us to look at new areas for growth so that we can remain sustainable and also continue to grow in market share. We see that international conferences offer the strongest potential to grow. Enterprise Needon is supported by the Growth and Needon Partnership, have actually engaged a full-time employee for a fixed period of three months with the hope to extend this to another 12 months, and that position is to drive an international business events plan and look to attract the international conferences, but not only because they attract the higher visitor, and also they help us to reduce the seasonality. As you can see from what I've just said, that so far, in a really short period of time, we've actually, we've had some really strong results, so we hope that we can continue on with this position. Overall, Dunedin continues to hold market share at 3.4% of the national share. The city has experienced, so even though we're in holding, we're still experiencing growth in line with the national trends, so we've had an 11% increase in the number of business events, which equates to an additional 195 events. We've also experienced strong growth in the multi-day conferences and conventions and the duration, so a 34% increase in the number of two-day conferences to 47, and a 21% increase in the number of conferences over two days to 58. As I've already mentioned, they do attract higher visitors, and they predominantly conference outside of peak seasons, so the international delegates spend an average of 5.8 nights in New Zealand, four of which are in the host region, and they spend an estimated $300 per day. Domestic conference delegates spend 2.9 nights in the host region, and they are spending an estimated amount of $509 per day. So as you will see, this report just highlights some of the results that we've had, what would be more favorable.
Any questions?
Yes.
Questions, councillor, councillor Hawkins.
Thank you very much for your report. I have a couple of questions, and these are maliciously questions, which I think I asked last time the report on this came through, and they relate to carbon offsetting and volunteerism. So I'm just wondering, do you guys have any stats on when the 195, whatever it is, events that come here, what proportion of those are aiming to carbon offset the event?
No, unfortunately, we don't collect that sort of information. That would be probably up to the individual venues to be collecting. However, I know that more and more is being done in the industry, and our national carrier, you know, do what they can to offset a number of the professional conference organisers within the industry are moving to be carbon zero certified, so there are certainly ways in which we can try and minimise it, and then there's always going to be more ways we can do that, so, yeah.
So I guess, just looking through the two documents, which ended up on the side of the table, I'm not sure where the other ones are, it doesn't appear that you guys are including any information about local carbon offset options or volunteer, volunteer option options in that pack?
We probably wouldn't do it at this stage of the process, but certainly when it comes to, once we've won the process and working with them on, because I guess at the initial stage, if you take it right back, we're promoting New Zealand first and foremost to win the conference, and once we've won the conference, then we can start getting into those more in-depth conversations, and they certainly are being held. We're seeing a number of conferences doing that volunteerism, so groups going out to Orakanui, for example, and doing some volunteer work there as part of their conference programme. Also have been working with a professional conference organiser based in Queenstown that are looking to develop that as a part of their model as well, so.
I'll ask one further question before I get into debate, and that is, I guess I'm curious about whether or not, given that we have in those packs, information about the visitor, many different visitor opportunities, including broader touring opportunities, the accommodation options available, noting that a lot of the conferences that we have are knowledge-based, reasonably high-end conferences, which may well be interested in volunteerism or carbon offsetting. You're not seeing demand for that information coming through, upfront information like this?
No, not as yet, not in that early, early discussion, but there's not to say that we couldn't look to add something in it. I guess we do hang our hat off the 100% pure New Zealand, which has its own connotations, but yeah, I mean, we can certainly look to, you know, start including something in those.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman, and thanks, Bree. My questions are similar, but perhaps at a higher level. We had the director of the Edinburgh Festivals out here last year, and she talked about how international partners were reluctant to work with them unless they could provide adequate environmental credentials to those international partners. So even at a base level of marketing and branding, has it not been considered to integrate our communities' environmental aspirations as part of our selling point on the international market?
Yeah, again, we personally haven't come across that demand yet, but that's not to say that, you know, we shouldn't be looking at ways we can do it. I guess we just have to, we have to be careful at how much information we include, because at this point, they're often looking for quite specific sets of information, and you don't want to lose them by including too much, but certainly, certainly happy to be, you know, putting a note.
I guess my question is less about, has there been demand, as it is about, are we looking proactively at presenting it? Because people may not ask for it, and they don't know what they don't know, and so we have the opportunity to present whatever information we like when it comes to pitching for these things, so how can we broaden the scope of acknowledging that there's limited space in a printed publication? How can we better integrate our council and our communities' wider strategic objectives within the business event space, whether that's environmental or waste minimisation or arts and culture or whatever? So I'm just wondering whether those are ongoing conversations and how we can, how we can help progress them.
Yep, absolutely. I'm certainly prepared, or I know that as an organisation, we're certainly prepared to have those conversations and look for the most appropriate way to do it. I haven't personally looked into it as yet, but I think that it's definitely a conversation worth starting.
Great, thank you. Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just, in looking at the very impressive, high quality of that visual branding that I think you deserve to be congratulated, but I wanted to ask, that image, that visual image of the city that we're seeing across all publications, and especially those ones we've just looked at, is that secure in that you've got a group of people doing it or one agency doing it rather than one individual who's got these high-level skills? Because the presentation, I think, is stunning, and I'd like to be assured that should one or two individuals change, you're not going to lose the consistent message that's being presented.
Absolutely. So you'll see there's a couple of examples, so we've got our local example, we've got two local examples and two international examples. So locally, we work within our branding guidelines, and it's something that the Dunedin City Council Marketing and Communications Team can produce, as well as a local designer that we use. Also, for Tourism New Zealand, we work with Reserve Group, which is Tourism New Zealand's preferred group, and, you know, we own a lot of those images and that content, so we shouldn't have any issue with that.
Good, thank you. Councillor Calvert.
Could you tell us a wee bit about, I know who produced that video clip, but why it was produced and for what audience?
So obviously, the people that we target when we are trying to pitch for international conferences is thought leaders and leaders in their field, so whether that's the business community or within the tertiary academic community. So what we wanted to do, or what Tourism New Zealand wanted to do, was to show people that have used the Conference Assistance Programme, to show how easy it is and how it can help the individuals, you know, the tertiary organisation, for example, you know, Itagao University, to grow their profile, and also have people speaking to them in the sorts of ways, yeah, they're being spoken to by their peers, rather than having a marketing agency say to them, right, you need to bid for this conference and for this reason. So I think it's certainly to give it a bit more credibility and...
So it's aimed at, so it's aimed at people who might be bidding for conferences with a view to providing endorsements.
Sorry, can you please rephrase that?
It's aimed to people asking for bidding for conferences, like the people in the video have done, and intend to provide endorsements by people who have already done so?
We certainly, there's certainly no, there's certainly no expectation of endorsement. I mean, Tourism New Zealand produce over, I think, around 60 bids a year, and, you know, that's three individuals they've used over the last three years that have helped them to endorse it, and they're generally happy to endorse it if they've had success and they've had that support that they often haven't been able to find within their own organisations, so.
I wasn't, I wasn't meaning to criticise that you would do such a thing. I'm just wanting to, trying to establish in my own head what the purpose of it and who it was for, and so it is intended for those people. It's all right. I wasn't, as I say, criticising that you would use the endorsement procedure to do that, just was that what you...
So just to clarify a point there, I think the video aimed, was aimed at the academics and others that would be best able to take a bid to a conference, so it was to encourage them to enter into that process of discussing, if they had that opportunity, all of the support that would be available to them, so that they didn't feel that there was a burden if they stuck their hand up to want to host an international conference. The more of them we get doing that, the more work it generates for us, and ultimately, hopefully, the end result is we get conferences here.
Councillor Bezette.
With, we're working in partnership, or Dunedin Enterprise, Dunedin Enterprise Needon are working in partnership with Tourism New Zealand. To what degree do they control where the conferences, or do they control where conferences are held? I read somewhere here, I just can't pick it up, but I think we've got something like 4% or 5% of the international market. Tourism New Zealand, they're able to say, well, this one will go to, a conference will go to Rotorua, this one here will go to Christchurch, this to Auckland, and if that's the case, how can we influence that? I mean, if we believe that we've got something to sell that is, that is better, if that's the right word, than elsewhere, are we able to do something about that in an aggressive way?
Yep. Tourism New Zealand don't have any control whatsoever over the destination chosen, so it's about finding the people, the champions that are prepared to put up their hands. So quite often, you'll have someone that they might meet in Wellington say, I would like to bid for this conference, but I'd like to bid for it on behalf of the University of Itagao. So it's about where the thought leaders are, and generally, they will bid on behalf of their university or their institution, or their home city, you know, depending on what their preference is, but Tourism New Zealand don't have the influence on that, they're completely guided by where that person would like to bid for, unless on the instance that perhaps a city isn't able to accommodate the numbers, or, you know, what they would need for the conference, but generally, it's completely guided by the academic or the individual.
And what sort of autonomy have we got, if at all, in that if, for example, we wanted to bid for a conference anywhere, and Tourism New Zealand were not interested, we could still do that, or we are an absolute partnership with them?
No, absolutely not. So the Conference Assistance Programme, as a guideline, it's generally for conferences over 200 people, and they have to have a certain proportion of international delegates. However, if someone came to us from, let's say, from the university or the polytech for a conference for 100 people that was international, even if Tourism New Zealand wouldn't help in some way, we would certainly provide on-the-ground support. We don't have the level of resource to be able to offer the sorts of funding they can get from Tourism New Zealand, but we certainly help them as we would a domestic conference coming to the city.
Councillor Pete.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This question around the looming competition for hosting conferences from four new, or proposed, anyway, conference centres. I'm just wondering, what do you think Dunedin has to offer that they can't offer? I guess points of difference is what we're aiming for here, is it? Or are we looking at a whole range of things?
Yeah, I think it depends on which market you're looking at, but I think we are very lucky to have the tertiary institutions that we have here, and that is our point of difference. We can be targeting conferences in specialty areas that would be almost irrelevant to some of the other cities. We're also fortunate enough to have Now Gig City behind us as a brand, so when you are trying to attract international conferences as well, to be able to say that you have that functionality, to be able to take the conference to the world while they're here. So, you know, UNESCO City of Literature, that was a huge part in us being able to bid for the Women in Travel Summit, that unfortunately, we were unsuccessful on. However, that designation actually gave us the opportunity when the opportunity wasn't there for us initially, so, you know, we have got a lot of points of difference. Outside of, you know, our wonderful tourism activities, I think it's, you know, it's more about that high-level stuff that the city can offer.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you. In the papers, you mention the collaboration with the university in respect of the bidding, and you've talked about that. Do we, as a city and the tertiary institutions, also have the administrative organisational capacity when they win those bids to actually organise things, or enough support to make sure those conferences, when they get them, are successful?
Yep, that's actually a really good question, and that's the great thing about this Conference Assistance Programme, is that the first step in the process is to do a financial feasibility study, so at that point, we would encourage that the academic or the person bidding for that conference include a professional conference organiser in that initial study, so that then they can make that decision whether they can afford to do it with having full support, or whether they need to trim that back, because I think in the past, you know, someone might have won a conference and then come to us saying they need help, and they realise they're in a position where they perhaps don't have the resource themselves. So the idea of this programme is to actually give them the resource right back at the beginning.
Thank you. And the other question is for Mr Christie, I suspect that one of the other parts of this equation is the accommodation side of things, so I'm just looking forward to what he can tell us about progress on further five-star, four-star plus hotels in the city.
Look, the accommodation, accommodation at a couple of peak times in the year is an issue around major events, events bidding that Bree is talking about. We specifically go out looking for those conferences that are off-peak season so that they don't clash with what will already be a full city, both for accommodation and also the other activities that take place around those conferences. So our preference is to try to get, you know, get that bidding process into the months when we have a city that's not at capacity. We're constantly working on the opportunities around further accommodation that would make that also desirable at peak times such as February.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Another question that I have the sense is going to turn into a suggestion, but I, but looking through the printed collateral, I was surprised, given that these are aimed at, some of them are aimed at international markets, at the lack of presence of Mano Fenua or in particular Kaiteahu values. One of the, there are photos in one of them of a marae in Rotorua, for example, and we do have some, and I just wonder whether that is something that is being actively pursued as, I mean, it is an international point of difference, our indigenous culture, and it would be good to see it celebrated if we're trying to showcase ourselves on an international platform. So is that something that you have adequate in-house resource to help you with, or is it something that you would need assistance to help put together?
On a local level, definitely, you know, any assistance would be grateful, from a national and level, from both Tourism New Zealand and our conventions and incentives New Zealand, it's all about Manaka Tonga and that hospitality that we can extend, and we, you know, our cultural and indigenous, you know, everything that we celebrate is certainly put on the forefront in our bids and in our presentations when it comes to conferences. Yes, admittedly, on a local level, you know, I don't have as much access to that information as I would like, so I would certainly be open to some suggestions on that.
That's great, thank you.
Councillor McTavish, you indicated you were going to move something?
Yeah, thank you. I've sent it through to Pam and to everyone, actually. Thank you. So it's just the recommendation on the order paper and a request that staff investigate and report back on how the clearly very successful business events work that's happening might be able to contribute directly to the wider strategic framework. Obviously, it's already doing that in some ways, but I think there are some potential ways to leverage what is clearly a growing market for broader objectives that we have, you know, there will be events that are offsetting their carbon quite regularly, and if we can track or get that resource applied locally rather than to a national scheme or whatever, then that will be growing the revenue that's coming into this community. Volunteerism, same deal, but from a community perspective, a range of community groups out there keen to receive as much assistance as possible from volunteers, there may well be ways in which we can promote that more strongly, or promote local groups more strongly in that way.
Other speakers? If not, I'll put it, all in favour? Against? That brings us to matters for consideration by the Chair. Hey, Cal.
Yeah, noting the report in the paper...
Noting the report in the paper on today, on the initiatives around cycling, I wonder if staff might report on opportunities afforded to Dunedin by recent cycling initiatives and how the city might capitalise on them. So it's pretty broad, but clearly there's a considerable amount of resource coming into the region from outside. And the network that's been formed, interestingly, doesn't connect at the moment with the one trail that starts in Dunedin, which is the Itagoo Central Rail Trail. And I would, I think that there's an opportunity here, or potentially an opportunity. I'd like to, I'd like some feedback from staff on what those might be.
Thank you for that. We certainly have looked at the announcement with some interest in terms of what Dunedin can do to get its stake on some of the government funding that may be available. I'm pleased to say that we've already begun engagement with MBIE to see what would be involved in us accessing some of that government funding, particularly linking into the trails that have now been granted some of that funding from both the Central Lakes Trust and the Community Trust of Itagoo alongside government funding. We would need to put in an application and that would need to be a joint application with an appropriate body such as the Trails Trust. That's something that we would obviously be looking to do as a first step and bring back a recommendation to council following that.
So, Nick Cull, are you happy that that's the way forwards?
We can do it either as by way of a report back to the committee or if time is more of the essence to actually just work with the appropriate bodies to get the outcome we're all looking for.
councillor Wilson, do you have someone that John should make contact with from the Trails Trust in sort of starting this process?
As Chair of Itagoo Central Rail Trail Trust, as one has to do under number four, even freshwater from the New Zealand Cycle Trails, Naharinga would be the best bet, which I will give you as number.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, councillors, councillor McTavish.
Sorry, just one more thing. And maybe I should have made it a C, but in light of the issues raised by councillor Hawkins around Manu Fenua involvement in the bid process, I wonder whether putting that on the next Maori Participation Working Party agenda would be a way to begin those conversations.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, councillors, that brings us to the end of this standing committee meeting. We'll take a short break while councillor Thompson comes to the Chair.